I will call this meeting to order. The Town Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. It's about 5:30, a little past 5:30 on July 21st, 2015. Do you want to call? Okay, calling the order. Roll call, please do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
Chairman Garcia.
President.
Commissioner Durham.
Here.
Commissioner DeBate.
Here.
We have four out of the seven, so we do have a quorum.
All right. Well, all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda from staff. Is there any changes or deletions or additions?
No, none.
Commissioners, do you have anything that you would like to add or modify? If not, do I have a recommendation for approval of the agenda?
Would you approve?
There's a first, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item that we have on the agenda is Citizens Forum. This is where we allow citizens to speak in behalf of any issues they would like to present to the planning and zoning that is not on the agenda for tonight. So, is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission at this time? Come to the podium if you like, and if it's not dealing with what's on the agenda.
This is planning and zoning, right?
That's correct.
What?
You will have an opportunity to speak when we get to that agenda item, if it's on this.
Okay. I can't wait, I can speak later.
You can. Saying there's no one else that's here to speak, we will go on to the next item, which is Item 6, Public Hearings. What we have on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for case number PG 2015-31, an application for a special use permit for COWS Foundation Archives for the property located at 146 Kit Carson Road. The commission's decision, the case must be based on the criteria contained in the Title 16 Town and Towns Code, known as the Land Use Development Code. What I do need to know is the representatives for this item, how many will be speaking? There'll be three. Louis, will you get their names?
Sure.
Did you say?
You signed in, okay.
How many people are going to speak in behalf, pro or con, to this item? I'd like to know how many, that we're looking at. One, two, okay, three, okay. Waiting for Louis to come down with those names. While we're waiting for that, I do need to ask the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, if anybody has any conflicts of interest in reference to this item that we'll be discussing. None noted, okay. The process that we'll be taking-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I just want to get which names are speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
Who's speaking tonight? Paul?
Virginia.
Virginia, okay. And on this slide? No one's speaking over here? Oh, you are. Your name is?
Jean.
Jean, okay, thank you.
Mr. Feinberg, will you read the rules of the public hearing? The public?
As the following constitute the rules for public hearings. In order to conduct an orderly and impartial public hearing, the chairman will preside and make all rulings for testimony given at tonight's meeting. The planning commission members have received and reviewed extensive materials regarding each application before the commission tonight, including the application and all related documentation, staff reports, and any letters in the file either supporting or opposing the application. The following rules will apply. One, all persons wishing to speak must first sign the speaker list and will be called in this order. Two, speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the commission. Three, speakers representing other persons will be allowed five minutes. The speaker must show written documentation that they represent someone else. Four, the chairman will allow cross-examination or rebuttal if the chairman feels this is pertinent to the findings presented. Five, the chairman will not tolerate shouting or unruly conduct and may direct the sergeant at arms to have any person removed from the meeting room for cause. Six, the chairman will then close the public hearing and allow the commission to deliberate the pending action to be taken based on findings presented by staff and by the public. The commission may approve, deny, approve with conditions, or postpone the decision to a subsequent meeting announced by the commission. Seven, the chairman will then call the question and voting will take place as how to proceed on the application. Eight, anyone aggrieved by the action of the zoning commission may file an appeal pursuant to the appeals procedure set forth in the Town and Towns Land Use Development Code. The appeal must be filed within 10 working days of the decision. Nine, all cases will be heard on their own merits and do not create a precedent for other applicants.
Thank you. Just to explain, the process that we're going to do is, we're going to have the presenter present first. There may be some questions, and any witnesses or any supporting documentation you would like to supply. And since there's three, I believe there's three presenters at this point. And then we'll let staff speak secondly, and then we'll open it up to other individuals that are on the list that might want to speak as well. And then the commission will have the opportunity to ask questions during the presentations, and then we'll have our discussions thereafter. So, on this list, it reflects Bob Parker as the first presenter. Unless you want to change that around a little bit. Okay, so if you want to come up, you'll be sworn in. Mr. Feinberg, will you swear him in to testify?
You can. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission and audience, thank you for the opportunity to present. Let me introduce the team that's involved with this project, the COWS Foundation Archives. I'm the owner's agent and part of the design team. Carl Jones, who will speak first after I make introductions, is president of the COWS Foundation. David Henry, who's over there in front of the computer, is part of the design team. And Virginia Cows Levitt, who will speak after I finish presentation, is the granddaughter of Eiger Irving Cows and a member of the foundation board. So, at this point, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Carl Jones.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my presentation will be very brief.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones.
Yes.
You need to swear.
I'm sorry.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Proceed.
Is what I said before okay?
Yeah.
My presentation will be very brief because Bob has the substance of it. What I want to provide is a little bit of background, who the foundation is, what this building is, and what it is not. The foundation was formed about 15 years ago for the purpose of preserving and keeping in Taos and keeping intact the COWS Sharp Historic Site and the collections that are located at the site. And to institutionalize what had been a family operation so that it would be within the protection of a legal entity. And the family was concerned about all of these precious documents and collections being dispersed and perhaps leaving Taos. So that's why the foundation was formed. And three years ago, based upon an agreement between the foundation and the family, the foundation acquired the site, the dirt and the buildings. And in return for that, through the tremendous generosity of the family, all of the collections and contents were donated to the foundation to remain here. The site has three historic designations. Among them is that we're listed in the National Trust for Historic Preservation as one of only 36 artist homes and studios recognized in the register in the United States. There's only one other one in New Mexico, and that's the O'Keefe Home in Abiquiu. Part of the gift from the family is the extensive COWS archive, which presently resides in Tucson. The archive has papers that are incredibly important to not only the site, but also its collections because they provide the provenance and the history of those collections and provide the evidence to establish authenticity of paintings. And those are obligations which the foundation is inheriting from Virginia, which he has been doing for many years, mainly authenticating paintings and providing provenance. The collection is not just paper. Among other things, it has 10,000 historic photographic negatives that were taken here in Taos. There are 33 sketchbooks also in that, Mr. Cows's sketchbooks. Another archive that we're inheriting because it was Jenny's great uncle is another member of the Taos Society of Artists Julius Rolshoven. And his archive contains some paper, but it also contains Native American artifacts and works of art. So, what this building will do is not change one iota, the current use of the property as it's presently used. What it will do is enhance our operations and make it easier for us to function by housing on the site, the documents that we need actually on a daily basis. And it will facilitate our educational program that includes publications of books. We've already published one book on the Santo collection. We're in discussions with a major university about a publication of a book on the COWS photographs. There's also one being prepared that we're already working on about the pottery collection. So these documents will help and facilitate with those publications and everything that we do on a daily basis. So, as I say, it won't change the use of this site. The site has been used as a museum for almost 25 years, and this building will be an important and appropriate adjunct and add-on to that use. It will be an appropriate and necessary part of our campus. A current analogy, although ours is on a much smaller scale, is what the hardwood did just a few years ago, when they expanded their campus to provide more room for storage of artworks, artifacts, archives, and for conservation and restoration. And the mission statement of the COWS Foundation is that we are here to conserve and preserve the site, its buildings, its gardens, its collections, and its archives for future generations. And to be a site for research and study about the Taos Society of Artists. So this building will not only serve our daily uses, it will also provide access to qualified researchers like professors, students, historians, authors, graduate students, to come and study materials that aren't available anywhere else. And we presently have the opportunity, and have considered that in the design of this building, to receive as gifts meaningful archives with regard to as many as four or five additional members of the Taos Society of Artists. But this is not an open-ended process because there were only 12 full members, and there is a finite amount of material that exists out there. Many of these artists really didn't have archives. Their materials weren't kept intact. The COWS archive is recognized as clearly the most important and most extensive and thorough of any of the archives. So, with that as background and a little bit of history, I thank you for the opportunity to put that into the record, and I'd like to turn it over to Bob Parker, who can talk substantively about the building and its design.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
I was just going to, as a matter of procedure, the issue before you now is the use. It's not so much the design of the building unless it somehow relates to the use. So that should be the topic of focus.
Mr. Feinberg, can you remind us why this needs a special use permit application?
The applicant is seeking a special use permit for an institutional use. Institutional uses require special use permits in the C1 zone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can elaborate on that as we go. Let me ask this, Mr. Feinberg. There's supposedly going to be two hearings tonight, and because this one concentrates on use, do you think you want me to go through the presentation to orient everyone?
I think it's-
As a project?
Yeah, I think it's okay to introduce the project in all of its aspects, but I think that the focus should be on the use.
Right.
Because this is a hearing for a special use permit.
Right, okay. Could we turn off the lights, please?
Is that sufficient? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Is it okay for everyone?
That's better.
I didn't mean to sneak up on you. Do you have this on?
Oh, yeah. No, actually, it's on here.
Go ahead, Mr. Feinberg. Can we have the next slide, please? So, this is the original six members of the Taos Society of Artists, and Irving Cows is the second one from your left there, looking toward the others. And it's at his house that this photograph was taken, and many of you have already seen this this year because of the 100th anniversary of the forming of the Taos Society of Artists. Next slide. And the site is right here. The entire COWS property is outlined in red here, and the site for the proposed archive building is right here, and that also shows over here on the site plan, which will be coming up shortly. I'd like to just mention the elements on the existing property. There's Henry Sharp's, Henry Joseph Sharp's second studio, which is located here, and that's proposed to be developed as an interpretive facility for the overall site. The Luna Chapel, which is the most historic part of the property, is right up there, and that was built in the very early 1800s, and that's now currently used for exhibitions. And there's a current exhibition there of Julius Rolshoven's paintings and memorabilia. The foundation offices are in here, and the COWS house and studio where Irving Cows did his paintings is right here. And then the backside here is his son Kippy Cows's machine shop. He was an inventor and a scientist and a very important personage during the Second World War, and he is also Virginia Cows's father. And then there's outbuildings here. There are tenant, leased tenant spaces that are along here. There's four of them, including Ed Sandoval's studio that is right here. Next slide, please. And this is just an aerial view. Again, the proposed project site is right here. The tenant spaces are here, the studio is here, the house, the Luna Chapel, and the Joseph Sharp, Henry Sharp's studio is here. This property here is the Mission Gallery, and that's not part of the site. Next slide. This shows, this photograph is 1926, looking from Kesnel Road, and at that time, of course, it was just a dirt road. You're seeing in the background here the Sharp studio. You're seeing some very early construction that was altered in the early 80s here, and then the COWS studio and house up here. And there's a latia fence across the front of, along Kesnel, and the site that is subject to this application is right here. Next. This is the proposed site plan, and this is the proposed location for the archive building, which is 3,565 square feet. And it is located on an area of the overall site that has never had any development on it. And there are no known artifacts on the site that, and people have been looking for Native American artifacts and so forth, and they've never found any. So this is the location of the building here. Parking is by way of access of an existing driveway here, and four parking spaces, which are required by code for the archive building here. There's a total of 36 spaces required for the COWS Sharp property, 18 of which are provided for, including the four here onsite, and the other 18 are on the family's leased land to the town, which is down off of Kit Carson here. Next, please. So this is a little closer view here of the proposed archive building. The limit of construction work here is dotted in, and we're very mindful that we want to protect the site, not only for the overall integrity of the site, but for adjacent neighbors. So the setback from the western boundary here of the adjoining neighbors is 50 feet, and the construction zone will be five feet beyond that, only for excavation of the foundation and the footings. And the, I'll go into the building a little bit more. This is the proposed parking. There's about three to four parking spaces here, and tenant parking spaces here, and the rest for the offices are up off Kit Carson, and the balance that are required are down there in the town lot. Next, please. So, this is the floor plan for the proposed archive building. As Carl Jones mentioned, it is not a public building. It has highly restricted access to researchers and scholars and an archivist. It has a small entry portal here, which you'll see in the elevations, a small reception area, an administrative office, an archivist's office here, research room here with large tables, and then archival storage is here and here. Photographic archival storage is here, mechanical room is here, shipping and receiving here, and a mechanical yard for the exterior HVAC and emergency generator. Next slide, please. So, this is the front facade that faces Kesnel Street, and it's really the only prominent facade that will be visible on Kesnel Street. It has a recessed portal here with divided light molyan windows behind it, and that provides light into the major research room. And of course, all these, all the glazing will be UV protected. The archivist's administration office, the entry portal here. This is the east facade. You're seeing part of that east portal, which is the same one that you see here. This is facing east, the little reception area, the shipping and receiving door, and the door to the mechanical room, and then the buried mechanical yard here for the equipment. Next, please. There's two other facades. This is the west-facing facade that would be seen from the adjoining property on the west. The overall building height is 15 feet, and so it's buried about nine feet into the back of the slope here. You see, the whole slope is sloping down from the upper portion to, down toward Kesnel Street, and it will be exposed six feet above grade at this point. And then this is the northerly facade, and it too is buried into the slope here with just a minimal exposure here. All of the surrounding landscaping will be native and indigenous plant materials, and it will be done to create a blend and blur situation so that the building is seated into the landscape. Next, please. And I believe this is a section that shows from the adjoining property on the west that their view shed is out over the top of the proposed archive building because it's buried quite deep there. This is Kesnel Street here. Next, please. And this is Virginia Cows and her husband, Virginia Cows Levitt, I should say, and her husband Ernie Levitt. And this was a photograph that was done, I believe, last year in the Luna Chapel, which is the earliest structure on the site that they use for presentations. Can we have the lights, please? So, the whole approach to this is, from a design standpoint, is to provide an integrated campus that takes a holistic approach. And the archives need to be located onsite for ease of access by staff, for the planning of exhibitions, the planning and design of publications, for access by VIP guests and major donors who will, from time to time, come to the foundation. Anyone that really goes into the archives will require credentials. This is an academic and scholarly research facility, as well as a repository for the conservation of the documents, the artifacts, and the other materials that are contained there. The entire 1.4 acre property that you see on the site plan over here is all under one ownership, as Carl Jones pointed out. The COWS Foundation owns that. The property is located within historic overlay zone of the town of Taos, and as such, the one commissioner asked, why does it require special use? And that is because it's classified as a special use. And it's under the category of any other use which is institutional in nature. The proposed archive building is institutional in nature as it cares and conserves for a collection of archival records, photographs, and artifacts that are significant to the cultural history of E.I. Cows, one of the founders of the Taos Society of Architects, and other members of the Taos Society of Artists. The proposed archive building, as I mentioned, is not a public facility. An analogy is somewhat similar to a rare book library. There will be one full-time employee, an archivist, and occasionally a visiting researcher. Materials that are made available for public viewing will be located in the existing COWS historic site and not the archives. So they'd probably be made available for viewing either in the COWS house, the Luna Chapel, or in the Sharp studio. A special use permit, as I mentioned, is required. The property, entire property is zoned C1 neighborhood commercial. The proposed use is consistent with the policies of the town of Taos, which encourages the conservation and enhancement of important historic sites and buildings. And I believe all of you as commissioners have the details of the application before you. I do want to say this. I do want to say this. Almost every museum that I've either worked with or am familiar with have archives onsite, and that's to facilitate the ease of use by the staff and by researchers. There's one museum in town that, whose archives are not onsite, and I can testify that it creates an inordinate difficulty for the director and for the staff to access it, because they have to go offsite, they have to make sure other staff is covering them, and it's just very, very awkward. And especially, as Carl Jones pointed out, when you're preparing for exhibitions and for publications, which is the, part of the mission of the Kouse Foundation, it's important that these materials have ready access onsite. I don't think I need to present anything more at this point. If the commission has questions, but I would like Virginia Kouse Levitt to just say a few words, and then...
Why don't we have her come up and speak? And then if the commission has questions, they can correct them to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Proceed.
Thank you very much for letting me say a few words today. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the family's perspective on this whole business. The fam, in about 25 years ago, my husband, who was a curator at the museum in Arizona, retired. I'm an art historian. We came up to help the family take care of our house, the family home. And in so doing, we realized what an incredible, incredible asset there was there. It's, it's a very, very unusual site to have everything together. The, the family all wanted that to stay together. And so we, we formed the foundation because we knew that the family itself wouldn't be able to do that in perpetuity and not have it dispersed. My husband and I realized that of all of the assets of the foundation, that one of the very most important was the archive, and that it was also the most vulnerable, because it had to be protected in a very special way, and access had to be made for its use. That's why this archive building is so important. The family has always expected that everything would stay at the site, because that's the way, they gave everything, all the collections and so forth, including the archive, with that in mind, that it would all stay together on the site, because that's a very unusual thing to have the ability to do. We were just lucky that there is a location on the property where a building to house that archive and its special needs could be put without any major impact on the site. And it just seemed like the right thing to do. The, well, that's sort of what I wanted to say, I guess. The, the foundation, the family is very passionate about preservation, and it's been, it's, it's a very important project to us.
Thank you, Mrs. Levitt. If you would like to come back up, Mr. Parker, and I don't know if some of the commissioners have any questions that they would like to ask. So, Mr. Bay, if you'd like to ask a question?
Actually, not a question. After reading through this and hearing what's being told tonight, I would like to thank you, Mr. Parker, for you and all of your people that work with you. This is the best application that I have seen since I've been on the commission. It's neat and it's complete, and it makes a big difference to us when we go to study it. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, and that's very much appreciated. And it took the entire team to put it together.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions from the commission?
No, Mr. Chair.
No?
I've got a couple. Is the architect going to be speaking? Mr. Henry, or?
Not unless we need technical support.
Okay. And we're not to discuss or elaborate on design, but I had a question about the north and west elevations.
Right.
Why they're without fenestration or windows?
Because that's where the archival storage is located, and both for security and for environmental controls, you do not want any openings there.
Okay. I very much appreciate your explanation of the height, the application, which Mr. Bay complimented you on, and I would concur. Talked about a one-story building, it was kind of confusing for me to do the math and figure out that only six feet would be exposed.
At the northwest corner.
Right. And I, I very much appreciate that. I also appreciated the care that went into the site plan in terms of building, pulling the building as far off the west property line as possible. I understand that was a change that was made. We have a new site plan and...
That's correct.
Okay. And also the fact that there's not going to be asphalt, which I like the historic Taos model.
Well, the whole site, if you know the site, is basically, other than the manicured garden, and it's almost a wild garden up at the Kouse House.
Right.
The rest of the site is very much a natural landscape with indigenous and native plant materials.
Now, I have one question about the use of the building. There was a statement early on in the narrative about the possibility, it said something about, this is an opportunity to archive several of the early Taos Society of Artists' work. Are you saying that it could possibly go beyond the two that we're aware of today, the Sharp, Kouse, or?
There have, and I can maybe let Carl Jones elaborate on that, there has been expressions of interest for up to six of the founders. But beyond that, as he pointed out, there's very, very little archival material left anywhere. Presently, the archives are scattered. The Kouse Archive is in Tucson. The Sharp Archive is, a part of it's out of the country. And there's some very small archives that are here locally, but only one or two. And there's some that are located out in one of the far western states. Yes.
Yes, sir.
May I add?
Perhaps.
Yes, you can. Since I'm the one made the statement.
Okay.
Just to clarify again, once we started talking about this and people heard about it, various individuals that control archives of other members of the Taos Society approached us and said they would like to give their archives, some of which include artifacts and paintings, to the site. We are only about the Taos Society of Artists, so we have a very limited universe that we're dealing with. Those expressions of interest started coming in very early in this process. So this building contemplates the known universe of what we're likely to get. It's not overly designed in terms of space, yet it's not so underdesigned that would, we would be forced in a year or two to start looking for, you know, digging a bunker to put something else in. Now, this, this is a one-shot deal for us, and we've got a guest coming to stay with us that will be part of our speaker series on the morning of August the 8th. He was a longtime professor at the University of Notre Dame, ran their art museum for over 20 years. And he happens to have a copy of archives for two of the 12 members. He's also an author and a painter. He's collected all sorts of things relating to these people. His archive is smaller than the Kouse archive. He's going to be our house guest, and he called me last Sunday, and he said, I want to give you everything I have, if you have room for it. And I said, I've got room for it. Don't worry about it. An important point to make is, the materials that are coming here but for this building could wind up at three different major universities, all of them out of state, and one of those is Notre Dame. So this would be a precious thing to have in Taos. It'll be, just as a, I don't reside in the city, but as a member of the greater community, this is going to be such a wonderful asset here that we can all brag about and be very proud of. There will be nothing else like it. Is that responsive? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I think at this time, what we're going to do is have the staff present, and in case there's any rebuttal or any questions that the commission might have, then we'll take him at that time. And there, I, there are a couple of individuals that want to speak as well. They will have their, their time to speak as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Feinberg.
I don't believe factually or substantially I have anything to add to the presentation that is before you. Again, I think the folk, what you're focusing on here is the use, and if you had any outstanding questions relating to the use, I would recommend that you ask any questions that you have. Other than that, there is no staff presentation.
I, I do have a couple of questions before other commissioners might have. In reference to water and sewer, do you, does the town envision any issues with the structure being constructed?
No. There are no issues with water and sewer. Both are located in the, in the right-of-way adjacent to the building site.
And there was a comment made that the, the town leases parking space from the Kouse group. Is there certain spaces designated to them because of that? Is there an agreement, a written agreement?
There, is there presently an agreement for the parking?
The family owns it, so...
It, it's an agreement with the town to allow people to park there. So the, Julian?
What I can say that is the town leases the parking lot from the Kouse Foundation, but there are no designated parking areas specifically for their use.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Just one more quick one. Mr. Jones, you mentioned, I'm sorry.
The staff is presenting. If we can ask them questions, we'll get the rebuttals from the presenters again, if you like, but do you have any questions for the staff?
No, not for the staff.
Okay. Mr. Parker, if you come back up to the podium, I guess they, there might be a couple more questions, I guess.
Okay. Can I go?
Yes.
I want to do it right. Mr. Jones, you mentioned the gentleman from Notre Dame, and I think you said that he was going to present some kind of speaking. Is that open to the public?
Yes, it's at the Harwood Museum in their auditorium at 10 o'clock on August the 8th. His name is Dean Porter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Don't.
No. There were one individual, Ms. Richards, that would like to speak. You're welcome to come up to podium, and I'll get some more names, if there's a couple others that would like to speak as well.
I'm Jeanne Richards.
Could you please raise your hand?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeanne Richards. I've lived here 30 years. I've been on the Democratic Central Committee for many years, many years, and I care about our town, and I care about how the zoning goes in our town and this historic district. Very important. It's, it's hard when everybody knows everybody, and I'm nervous, but anyway. What will be considered is construction of a large 3,600 square foot sophisticated warehouse, not in the warehouse zone M1, but in the neighborhood zone in the historic district. The proposed project is a fine idea, but it is inappropriately located. The town's ruling will affect everyone who cares about the authenticity and integrity of the historic district, or believes their home is safe because it's zoned residential. Now, Virginia Kouse Levitt, I can understand you want everything there. Well, I believe in the beginning, there was supposed to be a small Adobe-type building that sort of looked like a house, that would, that would house the Kouse, the Sharp, and the Rosehaven archives. And it would probably end up less than 1,000 square feet, and that would be appropriate. You could make it look appropriate, not a huge box. Anyway, I understand how she feels, and I think that would be appropriate. But as this building is presented, the lot is Zoned C1, which is neighborhood commercial. According to the Town Zoning Code, C1 Zone is a neighborhood in which small businesses that serve the neighborhoods, neighbors are permitted. From the code, the C1 Zone is intended for neighborhood-oriented, small-scale commercial uses, primarily to supply convenient goods and services to the residents of the neighborhood in which the C1 Zone is located. Storage buildings, large buildings, 3,600 square-foot, square-foot buildings are specifically prohibited in this zone. And to get around the zoning code, the developers are asking for a special use permit, which is a permit designed to allow the buildings, such as schools, museums, or churches, but they're all open to the public. This is not open to the public. I, I think that the storage building for all the artists is a fabulous idea, and so does everybody, but maybe there's another place it could be placed, maybe in the Kouse Meadow, where it could be expanded. Museums could come in and expand it. Or else, possibly this small, just the Kouse, Sharp, and Rosehaven idea. Thank you for listening to me, and I really care about our town, and I don't think we should adjust zoning for whatever use without a really good reason. And I don't see that this is appropriate for this space. Thank you.
Ms. Richards, let me see if anyone in the commission has, has a question for you. Is anyone? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another hand, someone else that would like to speak. If you'll come forward and state your name.
I'm Horace Baker in Lewis. I always tell you. So I know everybody on both sides of this issue, but I come from a really long line of historic preservation, so I hope that you will respect my views. Hi, can you hear me? So I just wanted to tell you, my, I've been in historic preservation for 55 years, starting on the East Coast with Annapolis, historic Annapolis, where they even went and tore down buildings that had been built on historic properties. And then to Hampton House, which was a beautiful property that is still intact, it doesn't have any ancillary buildings on it. As a matter of fact, I was put on the board specifically for that purpose, and when, not that I knew about it, but when I got on the board and realized that that's what they wanted to do, I got off of it. So my remarks are really to, oh, and then there was another property that I was also very involved with, Mount Clair Mansion, which is 36 acres inside the city of Baltimore, and they never put another building... building there for any purpose. So what I'd like you to think about is keeping this property historically accurate and even tearing down the part that isn't accurate, which is where those artists are. I mean, can't you envision how Cowes and Sharp sort of strolled the gardens, got their inspiration? Where Ginny, where you played as a child, Ginny and Ernie gave us a wonderful tour, my children, a wonderful tour last summer. We could just see you sliding down the slide. I could just see all these flowers growing up. So it seems to me that if you're going to be really good stewards for this property, that you would tear down what wasn't there initially and put this building across the street. I think there's probably plenty of room over there. Put this building across the street. So I hope you'll think about that. I think it's maybe a good alternative. It would keep the historic district going in the right direction. If this is allowed, who else might want to do it? Bloomingchine, they might want to put an archive in their garden. The Fetching Houses, pretty much, it's only got that one building, but it's really little. It's really low. It doesn't destroy the property. The hardwood wasn't really historic anyway, so that didn't really make any difference. The Martina Hacienda, suppose you went and put an archive building on that property, don't you think people would really not love that? Anyway, so those are my thoughts. I hope you'll forgive me, those of you whom I know, and know that this project is very dear to you. But I'm a purist. I really want the history of Taos to stay pure, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, there's another meeting that's after this one, and we're close to that. So, you know, we're going to limit the time to speak. We need to put this to vote. Okay.
Hi, I'm Lynn Robinson, and I've lived in Taos for a long time, often for 35 years. The first place I ever stayed was on Kesnell Street 35 years ago, and I feel the same way as the last woman who spoke and articulated everything beautifully. I think we have to maintain the integrity and authenticity of the historical district. I think this is a wonderful idea. I totally applaud you for creating these archives. I think it's brilliant. The preservation of these materials is priceless. And historically, people will be indebted to you for many, many years to come. What about the parking lot that you leased to the town? Wouldn't that be a more appropriate situation for a great big building the size of the J.D. Challenger Building on the corner of Kesnell as you stop at the light? I mean, that's the size of the building you're talking about. Yeah, that one's 3,600 square feet. It's a huge building to put in a quiet residential neighborhood that has, you know, really incredible historical meaning to a lot of people here in town. I just think the placement of this building is inappropriate. I think the archive is absolutely incredible, and we should all applaud and support that. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I'm going to allow one more person, and the rebuttal will come from the presenters. I'll limit both of you to two minutes.
Do you think these people are residents in that area? They just don't want...
Does she want to tell the truth?
Yes, sir. My name is Kim Manning. I'm resident of Taos. Needless to say, it's difficult to get up here and speak or raise questions about something that's such motherhead and apple pie. My perspective is really one of saying, is this good planning? Which I think, you know, is obviously your focus. So the first question in that regard becomes, is a warehouse an institutional use? Now, the original permit application, the original plans described this as a warehouse. It is a warehouse. If you look, if you read through the specific uses, classified as special uses, cemetery, church, hospital, public park, schools, they're all public in nature. Is a private, you know, closed to the public, does this really meet conceptually the definition of an institutional use? I have a hard time answering yes to that question. I think that's something that the commission may want to wrestle with a little bit. Secondly, is a warehouse an appropriate use within the historic overlay zone? You're barely a two-minute walk from Kesnell and Paseo. Are we wanting to use a tract that is so conveniently located within the historic zone to be basically a dead land use? You know, a handful of researchers are going to be coming a few times a year. That's about the extent of it. I would have hoped that within the historic overlay zone, we're looking for more vibrancy, more activity. This doesn't seem to go there. Third, is a warehouse an appropriate use within the C1 zoning, even if arguably institutional? Warehouse is not allowed in C1, not allowed in C2, not allowed in CBD. You have to get to M1, like manufacturing, before a warehouse use is allowed. Do we want to jump to the most intensive zoning category that the town has in this kind of location? Again, I have a hard time saying yes. If institutional use is to be interpreted this broadly, then if I go buy a house, do I have any assurance that the surrounding zoning is actually going to provide me the protection I thought I had? This really seems to be kind of taking the whole special-use permit to a level and a direction that it doesn't seem to me like it was trying to go. So I think we've kind of bent the concept to the breaking point, and I have real trouble with saying that's good planning. Again, it's just an amazing concept. As you realize, Cowes' family owns much of the surrounding property. There are options that wouldn't require, I think, the kind of really end-running, the zoning regulations that, to me, this kind of represents. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to allow Ms. Rosenquist to speak, and then that'll be... Then we'll have the rebuttal.
I'm sorry.
Well, in full disclosure, I want to say that the Cowes House and the Mission Gallery share a common wall, and you don't get to be any closer neighbors than that. Also, in full disclosure, Dean Porter, who's coming to speak, I show at the Mission Gallery. If any of you want to come and have a preview of his work. My reason for being up here is because I have a question. I had an opportunity to look at the design, and I thought I had asked all the questions that I had, but I realized later, there's one more, and that's about the mechanical part of the back of the building. I understand that that's going to be in service of the climate control inside the archive. Is that correct? And that the generator would be there in case the electricity went off, and so you could maintain the integrity of the climate inside. My question is, how much noise are all of these things going to make? No. I don't know what a... What do you call those decibels? I don't know what a decibel is, so you'll have to explain that to me. And if it's the ordinary sound that this machinery outside is going to make on a day-by-day basis, will it be 24 hours a day, 365 days a year? How much noise will it make? How audible will it be throughout this quiet neighborhood? And the other thing is, as long as we're talking about history, we should go back to calling Ohito's Ohito's. It was that because of the springs that have been there forever. Kesnell had no historical meaning, and please think about changing the name back to Ohito's. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosenquist. So at this time, we'll let the presenters rebuttal some of the questions or concerns some of the people have.
Thank you, and I'll address the noise issue with respects to the mechanical yard. There are two pieces of equipment in the mechanical yard. There is an HVAC unit that will cycle on and off to maintain both the temperature controls and the humidity controls within the facility. And there is an emergency generator located there should there be a failure of electrical service in the immediate area. The... Both pieces of equipment, I could almost use the analogy that they're in a bunker, a concrete bunker, because they're set into the side of the hill. There's very little exposure. The roof over the mechanical room will be concrete. The entire inside will be insulated, and there's only an air passage for the circulation of air for the HVAC unit. In terms of decibels, our mechanical engineer tells us it'll be in the order, not counting the generator, which would only be very periodic, but the HVAC unit will be in the order of somewhere around 30 decibels because of the nature of the machinery and the amount of insulation. And also, around the mechanical yard, it'll be heavily and densely landscaped. 30 decibels is what you experience at nighttime in a rural suburban environment, so it's very minimal. And I'll say, the other thing is, it's certainly the objectives of the foundation to minimize any noise, because there are tenants located there, and the integrity of the site is very important. So it behooves us to absolutely make the equipment as silent as possible. The generator is not anticipated to go on probably for six hours if there's an electrical failure because the building is so heavily insulated. Does that answer the question?
Well, I still don't remember the decibel.
Well, as I said, it's a complex formula of measure of sound pressure and sound attenuation located certain distances from source. But the best I can say is, from what our engineers told us, that it's effectively what a nighttime rural suburban environment would be.
Mr. Parker, I think two questions that I've heard concerns about has been, one of a warehouse.
Yeah, I want to apologize. We probably, when we were putting the application together, we were looking for terms that would try and set the tone and accurately describe the facility. The truth is, it's a repository. It's not much different than a rare book library, where there are major environmental controls for humidity and temperature control. And warehouse was probably an inappropriate use of the word. This is clearly an institutional use as an accessory to the main museum, the Cowes property. So I apologize for that. And then the other question I think had to do with ownership of the Cowes family lands, and I'll let Mr. Jones speak to that.
In further response to Rena's question, as president of the foundation, I have given instructions to the team that this outdoor mechanical equipment be as close to silent as possible. We don't want noise. We don't want our neighbors experiencing noise, and we have tenants right outside of there. So I don't want a tenant knocking on my door and claiming constructive eviction because there's a big noise outside. So I'm very confident, and we've consulted with the mechanical engineers in Santa Fe, that his... The quote from him is, noise will be a non-issue. So those are the instructions. Those are the marching orders, and we fully expect that it's achievable. I'll let the council struggle with what's C1, what's M1, what's QR, whatever. All I can tell you is that practicing law for 40 years, I'm highly comfortable and confident in the correctness of our application and how it is appropriate to this site. As far as moving off-site, the places that have been suggested, we don't own that property. And that property is expensive property. To go out and try to acquire that would easily double the cost of this project. We don't have the money to build the building yet. So to suggest that an easy solution is to go put this elsewhere is really not a practical solution. And for us, it really is the death knell for the project. We just wouldn't be able to afford to do that. I don't see any prospect that we could raise the money both for the building and to go acquire a site elsewhere or to convert some vacant building in town. We've been told, and it's been my own experience, that to repurpose an existing building frequently can be far more expensive than building a new building from the ground up that's purpose-designed and purpose-built. So we've taken all of those things into consideration. And the other thing we've taken into consideration is the very clear statement of ownership rights under New Mexico real estate law, and that is, so long as we comply with all the regulations, we don't cause damage to a neighbor, we don't encroach on a neighbor's property, and we don't create a public nuisance, we are entitled to the full use and enjoyment of our property and the exploitation of our property. So we're just asking for our basic landowner rights, and there's just no opportunity to go by... Nothing's been offered to be given to us for a dollar. Let me put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. At this point in time, it's with the commission. If someone wants to make a motion or if there's additional discussion, we can do that at this time.
Mr. Chairman? If I could, before you do that...
Yes.
I just want to make a few points. The questions that were presented in this handout by Mr. Manning, these are all extremely good questions. And these are the questions you should be asking yourself when you're deliberating on this. Often in land use, things aren't black and white. Definitions often are not given in codes as to what things are. But these are all questions that I've asked myself when in reviewing this application. So I think it's important. And if you have any specific questions relating to any of these questions for staff, please don't hesitate to ask.
Okay, at this time, if someone can... If someone would like to make a motion, then we can have further discussion if need be. Do I have a motion? From anyone?
It's so quiet. There's so many papers. I would make the motion in favor of the project. I kind of jumped when the word warehouse came in. This is a C1 zone. It's not residential. Warehouse is something that's cold and big and concrete. Warehouse is something that's cold and big and concrete. Looking at the floor plan of the project, I see research tables. I see, to me, it's more like a library. I'm sure that the archives, the material is not put in boxes and just stacked. They're probably on shelves. They're probably worked out some way that there can be art students coming in and doing research there. To me, it's more like a library.
Ms. Baker, so if you want to make a motion, and then we can have further discussion?
Sure.
Your justification for the motion?
I'd like to, and I'm looking for the exact wording that was written on the recommendation. Can you help me? Okay, I would move the conditional approval of the application. If we determine that the proposed use is institutional in nature and not detrimental to health, safety, welfare, and continued aesthetic beauty in the project of the community, if the commission approves the request, the approval should be conditioned upon the following, and then there's three things here, and I read those. I'm in favor of this project, and I make the motion that we approve it.
Do I have a second?
Subject to the three conditions and the...
Subject to the three conditions, sorry.
Will you read those three conditions?
Sure.
To the public?
Number one, the proposed use must be in accordance with the use parameters outlined by the applicant in the application materials and presented to the commission, including but not limited to proposed hours of operation, building location, building massing, and parking configuration. Number two, the proposed use must be in accordance with any additional conditions determined necessary by our commission to protect the health, safety, welfare, and aesthetic beauty of the community.
Are there any additional that you feel need to be addressed?
One more. There's three. Pardon?
That, that's more of an open-ended recommendation in case there are additional conditions that the commission would like to place on this application. So otherwise, that wouldn't be a condition.
All right. You want me to read number three?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant must obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission for the proposed structure. Those are the three conditions.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a first and a second. Any more discussion? Will you please call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Pollard?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Chairman Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Durham?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBay?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
That's six yeses.
Okay. The motion has passed, and we'll go ahead and go forward with the next item. I just want to stress to the, to the commission that we're kind of exceeded our allotted time, so if we can go through the other parts of this quickly, I would appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is matters from the staff.
No matters from staff at this time, other than that I will be contacting all of you in the near future to arrange a combined meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission to formally go over procedures for public hearings. So look forward to that email. We'll sort out a time, and we'll have a combined meeting properly noticed.
Thank you. Any matters from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
No, Mr. Johnson.
Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sign with a five by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes, ayes.[1789.63]